Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Today is Tuesday, May eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. This is part two of Dearborn Heights City Council Budget Wrap-Up. At this time, I'd like to begin with page number nine. We agreed today to split it up and just do the salaries today because we were going too long last Friday. At this time, we are on page nine, and we do have three employees on this line that do not follow under union contracts. That is, the Administrative Assistant, the Executive Secretary, and the Director of Grants. At this time, would anybody like to start with any recommendations in regards to this?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah? I mean, Abdallah?
Abdallah can go ahead.
No.
Page goes first.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Abid.
No, I didn't ask to speak yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So the A B D E L, and automatically said Abdallah.
I'm going, I'm going to recommend, Madam Chair, we make the Administrative Assistant under different name, Administration Affairs Director. And I would like to set that salary at eighty thousand. And it's not necessary that we will give that person eighty thousand. If the mayor wants to give any amount, we would like him to come back to the City Council with an amendment for that salary.
Okay, at this time, I do believe that the mayor would be the one to change that title, not us. We don't have that authority. All we are doing tonight is we are looking at the budget as it's presented to us. If he would like to change that, you know, title, that would be up to the mayor.
Okay, we can leave the title, but we can, can we up the salary to eighty thousand?
Madam Chair.
Okay, Council, well, I, I've got Councilman Mu, okay, go ahead, Councilman.
Sorry, I, I, I'm just, and it's more of a question to Councilman Abdallah, and I think, is he insinuating to increase the loan amount to eighty thousand for the Administrative Assistant?
I'm just setting the position at that much. It doesn't have to be the present, or the past, or any future person who comes in. My goal is really to attract the best to our city, so we have competitive salaries with other cities. And I looked at the salaries in the region around us. This is a very fair, very average salary. It's not outrageous. And previously, the previous administration have suggested eighty thousand. And we approved it actually. But because of what the previous administration did by moving his assistant to another job to give her an increase, because she didn't get an increase. The City Council, we all remember that they took all the increases away because of what was done.
So I just want to understand, so we're, we're, we're asking for it to be capped, or starting at eighty? But the mayor can determine whether he wants to give them seventy or eighty?
Yes, it's capped at eighty.
So you're asking for a cap at eighty?
Yes.
Okay.
Start at what? Fifty-five, six-twenty?
Right now, she's at fifty-five, six-twenty. He's recommending seventy-five. I would like to cap it at eighty. And if he is going to change it from fifty-five six-two-zero to any number, he can, he has to come back to us.
Okay, I have Councilman Muscat.
I respectfully disagree with Councilman Abdallah, I guess.
It's okay.
Some of the few times I disagree with the gentleman. The mayor is already asking for the seventy-five thousand for the Administrative Assistant. And for the record, I'm okay with all the salaries on this page. I know we can't do it, well, I don't know if I can even say that. I'd like to see the Director of Grants be a permanent position instead of the six months. Because that position is very important. It's bringing in extra money to the city. And we keep that salary roughly the same, and it'll attract someone if one day Mr. Jamal leaves. But I'm okay with the seventy-five thousand dollars and the seventy-six thousand dollars. Because the way, Councilman Abdallah wants to do it, or then the mayor will just come back and give us, he's gonna do it. He's going to be bringing back a budget amendment for that, so we might as well just do it now. And I think seventy-five thousand dollars is fair, and seventy-six thousand dollars is fair.
That's fine, that's fine with me, Councilman.
I have Councilman Abdallah.
So I have a couple of comments. The first comment is in regards to Councilman Abdallah's proposal. I'm, I'm, I'm in disagreement with that type of a formula, and my reasoning is this. We would be given too much powers. And this is no reflection on the current mayor. This is on any mayor that's in power. Too much powers to any mayor to, to set the salary. And I think with our jobs as being the legislative end, and most importantly, the ones that are in charge of budgeting, I, I still think that particular, I don't want to use the words "power," maybe the decision-making. I, I think we should still be involved with that decision-making process. Therefore, I don't believe it's the right thing to say. Henceforward, mayor, you have up to this much, and you could decide on your, and I just don't think it's a good idea. I think we should set a particular salary and give it on a case-by-case basis. So this is respectfully disagreeing with Councilman Abdallah. In regards to a couple of other things, as far as the salary for the Administrator, quite honestly, first of all, I, first, I try to avoid the words "assistant." I don't like those words. I prefer Chief of Staff, or something along the lines of that. But I think initially, right now, being that she is newer to our city, I don't believe we should jump to such a high salary right away. I think she could do a good job. She seems to be doing a very good job, but I'd like to personally wait until we jump to something like that, maybe either six months later, or maybe even next year. I'd be more comfortable with the seventy thousand dollar salary at this particular point, on that one. On the Executive Secretary, I know there was no changes. And on the Director of Grants, I'd like to get an assessment with your permission, Council Chair, from the mayor in regards to that particular position, because that's a position right now that we put in place at the time. We put it for a hundred-and-eighty-day period. And before I accept personally to continue to, and it doesn't matter, it's not personal, it's not for a specific person, I'm talking about the actual position. To continue with that position, I'd like to hear from the mayor as to what that position has done. Now, I'm talking about as far as end result. What has that brought into our city? End result, not what somebody's applied for, and anybody can apply for a grant. Actually brought in, or at least calls to bring it in, and then I would see how much potential for that particular position would be. There, there would be, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Would you like to answer that?
Thank you, thank you. Thank you for that question. So a few, few things. One is obviously that the position, you know, with the council's request and council approving that position. I've had the opportunity to assess a lot of things that Mr. Jamal is doing. And since, since he hit the ground running, he hit the ground running. Obviously, you guys are aware from what I brought forward, some of the concerns and issues that we, that was brought forth, you know, against the city. He was able to get us a lot of information, especially with non-conformists with the state. So he was able to engage that, you know, he was, he was on the ground discussing stuff, you know, with, you know, we had a several discussions with the state, trying to give us some time to answer the questions and the concerns with the non-conformists. So he's actually working on the portion. As you all know, we, we did not have any processes in place for contractors to get the work. It was, I mean, I, I, I don't like to say this word, but it was free-for-all on a few, a few fronts, that contracts were being awarded to companies. And that's one of the things that, one of the non-conformists right up by the state, that's one of the reasons they came after us. So he's actually working, he's working on, he's gotten us out of a lot of, like, hot water, with trying to have, I guess, a mechanism in place for, to send out for bids and do the RFQs, and even write up different contracts going up to some vendors. And with, with that, you guys have seen on, on the council agendas, you know, several initiatives that he actually submitted, especially for the FEMA grants, you know, that he's involved in. The initial one that we had is supposed to be shut down or closed several years ago. Every council member has seen it, you know, current council, with the one from the two thousand and sixteen grant, that, I'm sorry, the FEMA that we, we have received, and it was not submitted properly. So he was, he was able to, I mean, just, just to give you an example, you know, when, when I was appointed, you know, I had almost an hour and a half meeting with state police, with the Chief of Staff, Mariana, trying to plead with, with the state police to actually give us some time to be in compliance with the FEMA. So, well, luckily, you know, we were able to get more time, and when Mr. Jamal took over, when he came on board, he was able to make sure that we're closed on that grant, so everything was submitted the way that the state police wanted it submitted. And after that, he's gotten us like several, you know, a couple of grants from FEMA that we were not aware of. So he had, he's, his transparency and his, you know, dedication showed to the FEMA folks and state police. They actually told them about a couple of grants to apply for, and which he did. And that's why you see on Agenda, the last Agenda, we were able to purchase more homes off, you know, Ekor's Creek, you know, just to, you know, help out some of the residents from flooding.
So, so has there been any grants, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, has there been any grants that have been started by, and again, this is no reflection on, on the person, I'm talking about the position, that were started with the current director, and I use the words "current director" only because I don't, I'm not implying a particular person, I'm talking about just a position. Has there been any grants that have been started and ended during this new position that was brought on, new, obviously, onto the administration, that has brought in more than the seventy-six thousand, or in this case, half of a year's salary, which would have been, I don't know, thirty-eight thousand dollars? Has there, has there been more than thirty-eight thousand dollars? Thirty-eight thousand dollars brought into the city that was started from day one, that this person started, or this position started, until right now? Has there been more than thirty-eight thousand that came in new? Not, not grants that were already started, and somebody finished them up?
Well, I, I can tell you, I mean, that's a good question. So just the one grant that I was telling you about, the one he was able to close it, that would have been, we would have been in hot water with that one. We would have to pay back a lot of money, because there was a lot of, there was no information. So that would have cost us, probably, I mean, I don't know, I don't want to put a figure, if they would have had us pay all the money that they gave us for those grants. So he was able to, obviously, you know, shut, you know, close that one. But also, he's gotten us grants. These grants, you can't just start them and close them in a short period of time. So the grants that he's gotten us, you know, with the FEMA, so you know the process, Council Chair Protam Abdallah, with these FEMA grants, when you get the ones for the homes, there's, there's a long process. You have to go, you know, getting the homes, you gotta assess them, you gotta praise them. So we have several of these homes that actually, under the last grant that he received for us, that he's working on currently right now, and you should see something on Agenda for Tuesday, some of his work. So he has started a lot of the grants already, so it's in work. It's gonna be closed before his time, you know, before the six months. It's gonna be over, I would say, two, three million dollars that he was able to achieve for us. In addition to that,
Wait, if I could interrupt you for a second, if I could interrupt you for just a quick sec, there, Mayor.
Okay.
So he's got over two million dollars that were started by him, and I realize, obviously, grants don't happen within thirty, forty, fifty days. I totally realize that. But I'm talking about where it looks like they're coming within two to three million, that's gonna be coming in. That had this position, and again, I want to state "position," had this position not been in place, we would not have two to three million. Is that basically what you're stating?
You, you are correct, Council.
Okay. Okay, that, that makes me comfortable. Thank you. And by the way, something I forgot to mention in regards to Mariana. I know her resume is very, very impressive, and I've heard good things about her from a couple of different directors, and from the mayor, so good job, Mariana.
Councilman Badu.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you so much, and I'm just going to echo a little bit of what Councilman Abdallah said on behalf of Mariana. I had, she had a conversation with the mayor in his office regarding this position, and he was very open-minded as well, I believe, to the seventy thousand with a three percent increase. I think, I think that's the way it should go. I think Mariana definitely is very, very hardworking. I think fifty-five thousand for a, for the Chief of Staff isn't something that's doable. I know she's going on and doing a lot of work, so I would love to see my colleague started at seventy, seventy thousand dollars with a three percent increase. You know, we definitely need to reward our employees. And, and, and I think seventy thousand is fair. I know, I think she's, you know, aside from how amazing her resume looks, that she's going to eventually be, who knows, even be at eighty thousand in the next coming years, but I think it's something that gradually needs to, you have to attain. So, and then as far as the grant, I think, I believe he's doing a phenomenal job. If he's bringing in two million dollars, that's two million dollars that we never had. And so I would also like to kind of just see some concrete information showing that we did receive the two million dollars, because then we can go back and, you know, let our constituents know, hey, you know, you know, before having this, we would have lost two million dollars, but because we have this amazing grant writing position, it is, and I'm sure our grant writers are doing a phenomenal job, we've now attained two million dollars. So I, I just want to echo and piggyback a little bit about what Councilman Abdallah, a true mentor of mine, had to say, and I think Mariana and the and the Director of Grants is doing a phenomenal job. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Conston.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and just to echo what Councilman Abdallah said and Councilman Badu said, I agree one hundred percent. I note that the Chief of Staff in the mayor's office has, I believe, several master's degrees. Also, it's always said that the, the city budget is a, often said, a living, breathing document. I think what we set in the budget, we should try to follow and stick to. I mean, the budget process is being done to, you know, for the city to follow. Sure, it may have to be amended, but I think once we agree on a budget, the budget needs to be followed. Thank you.
I'd also like to weigh in, too. I do agree with the different raises that we've got here on this page. But one thing I'd like to suggest, and I think everybody's overlooked, is the Executive Secretary has got no raise, and she is part of the support system, it's, which is the first office at City Hall. I would propose that she gets five to ten thousand raise herself, because she deserves it. She is very hardworking. She is the administrative assistance backup. They're a team, and I think we need to take care of her, too. She's been there a long time. She really hasn't got any raises. And I'd like to propose about a ten thousand dollar raise for her.
Is she union?
No, she is not.
No.
That's why I was surprised to see she was overlooked, and I do believe she deserves it. She does work hard. As everybody else says, they're part of a team in that office, and I think we need to reward them all to do a good job.
Council Chair, when was the last time she got a raise?
It was a long time. Well, I think the first year we were on council. Or no, it was before.
With, with HR and all, maybe?
Elizabeth, I mean, and it was really minute, what I remember back in the day, when the mayor gave it to her.
It was negotiated with the council, and it, I think that was two years ago.
Was it? Because I'm trying to remember if it wasn't when I was in the audience, or if I was on council.
The mayor raised, waving his hand.
I understand. We got HR here. Please do not interrupt.
I don't mind if the mayor goes in front, whatever. He was, he was first, I think, but, and then I can answer, whatever, doesn't.
We addressed you first, and then the mayor will go after you, because you were addressed first.
Okay, so with regards to the raises, so sometimes this is done in two different ways. Sometimes flat out, the City Council has given wage increases for the non-union personnel. In other times, the non-union personnel benefits and raises get extended when we settle a contract. So for instance, if we settled the contract for the TPOEM, then oftentimes, a letter goes from the administration asking the City Council for consideration for the extension of benefits as, in addition to the raises. So that also can happen with regards to her raise. I want to say, last year, there was some small amount. I could log on and verify that exact amount for you in a few minutes or seconds. So probably by the time you talk to the mayor, I would have that, but usually, July one, we factored in a raise for Stephanie over the, or for the Executive Secretary over the years.
Last two years.
Yeah, I can, actually, in one second, I can tell you. Oh, yeah. You know what, I, I wanted to forget two thousand and twenty, I think, like most people.
You're on O eight.
So she, it was a marginal increase, which was a one percent increase in two thousand and twenty. And again, it was a marginal increase in two thousand and nineteen, and again, that went into effect July first of two thousand and twenty, and it was only a one percent raise.
I feel it, yeah, I do agree. I don't know, does anybody else agree on that?
Councilor?
Yes, Councilor Muscat.
Five thousand would be a, a nice little raise, I think, to make it to forty, forty-eight, two-seventy-two.
I agree on that.
I, I mean, it, it's a, it's not a tremendous amount of money, but at least you signify the fact that she's doing a good job, and I think that's important.
I just wondered, because we're giving such a large raise to everybody else, and it's not even the twenty thousand we're giving to other people. It's ten thousand, it's half of what we're giving out to others, and so she has been there a long time. I don't know, it's, and it comes out of two separate budgets, so it would be five thousand on one budget and five thousand on the other.
We can't forget the, the, the positions that we're doing as directors and, and secretaries and things of that nature, so you know, as, as the union guy, it's hard for me to say this, but the higher up you are, the more money you make. And that's just the way it is. And, and I know Stephanie has degrees also, and that was one of the concerns that the former mayor had when we gave her a raise. And I remember Councilman Abdallah saying that, you know, with her degrees, she deserves to have a raise. So again, I think five thousand dollars would be good. And, and just to point out that all of us council people that are here, except for Mr. Councilman Badu and Councilman Abdallah, we really pushed hard to get a grant writer before. We wanted a new grant writer. We finally got one. Remember that now. When you think about this salary, we wanted it, and we finally got it, so now we can decide what we're gonna do with money.
Let me let the mayor talk, because he's had his hand up, and we really, it's in all fairness, we need to call on him. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Council Chair. No, I do agree. She actually, she really works very, very hard. And the, we did not overlook at that, as, as our HR director said, because of the, the TPOM, we were actually waiting for that, for that, that contract. And when I was appointed, obviously, it was like two weeks or so, you know, when we started doing this budget. You know, I was under the assumption she was the TP one, till HR director explained it to me. So yeah, she does obviously deserve a raise, but we were, we were gonna actually put in for it after the TPOM, so as the.
Mayor, are you okay with doing it today, since we're going over the budget?
Of course, of course.
How much would you like to do?
Do that a year ago.
Okay. How much would you like to do?
I, I agree with whatever the council approves. I mean, if you, what, you want to give her a ten, ten?
I think, she, she, you know what, you guys work hard in that office. You need somebody good there that's gonna stay.
I, I agree, and just, please take note also, it's the point five. So just, even if you put ten K, it's not like she's gonna get the whole amount. It's, you know, that, it's that twenty, it's, it's, it's half, half, a half I had.
Yeah, it would be split five thousand through this department, five thousand through the other department.
Exactly. So I, I agree, she's, she really works hard, and since I've been on here, she stepped it up. She's doing a lot more work than she has in the past, you know.
Thank you.
Very passionate about the position.
Yeah.
And she's, she's doing a lot, you know, she's always, she's very eager to do more.
Yeah, because I saw that when I was in there, too. She is very good at what she does. Councilman Muscat, you're next.
Uh, I think I just had my say for the second time, so.
I know. Okay, I have Mariana. I don't know if you have anything, you, you're on the list here. I don't know where you went. Did you still have something to say? If you do, please, oh, there you are. Hold on, you're flipping all over here. There you go. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Yeah, actually, I was gonna bring that up. When I originally raised my hand, it was the Administrative Assistant. And if you look at the budget that we had amended with the public hearing recommendations prior, we had given her a three percent raise already. Of course, a ten percent raise is much better. But I do want to remind everybody, and this is echoing Gary Miyaki's letter from before, that based on City Charter Section four point nine, it is the mayor's duty to fix the compensation of the employees within the limits of the budget appropriations adopted by City Council. So again, with a lot of these numbers that you're gonna see, whether it's mine or Stephanie's, it is still at the discretion of the mayor to set that number within, within the limits of the bracket that you set for that.
Okay.
So just keep that in mind.
Thank you. Okay, next I have Abdallah, Councilman Abdallah. Go ahead, please.
Yeah, if the HR can tell me, what is the average salary in the region for the Executive Secretary? Anybody?
Director Perry? Hold on.
That's a hard one. That's a hard one. I had to look at that survey. As you know, executive secretaries make, you know, very good compensation, especially on a corporate level, and those of you who have been in a corporate level probably know that firsthand. And so, you know, I do believe that this is lower than what the average is, especially if you compare it to some of our neighbors. So I'd have to look at that CW to, to make sure, but I could, like most of our wages here, I can assure you, ours are below average.
Thank you.
I understand. Does she, does she have a number?
I, I, I don't have a number offhand, because I, I have to look at the survey, go back to what I sent last week to you. And I don't know if I can find that right now. Yeah, I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to look, sir. You can skip me.
You know how long she worked in the city?
Yeah, so that, that, that's an easy one. Thank you. Two thousand and fourteen.
Wow, okay. Right, I, I don't mind giving her a raise, but I would like to see, you know, her, her salary goes from forty-three thousand to fifty thousand. Make it even.
I'd still say we just go the ten, five and five out of two different budgets, because it makes it easier that way to split it, instead of trying to do pennies and cents.
That's fine.
All right. Councilman Abdallah, did you have one last thing before we move on and vote on?
Just, just want to say that I'm comfortable going at fifty thousand at this particular point, only because, well, A, she does a good job, and B, most importantly, this is the first line of, you know, when any resident calls into City Hall, especially into the mayor's office, this is the first person you speak with, and just like in my business, the first person the customer speaks with is, I think, extremely important, that they be the sounding board, initial sounding board for residents. And I'm, I'm okay with going to fifty, and if you guys all feel as a whole to fifty-five, I'd be comfortable with that, being that she's been there since two thousand and fourteen.
Yeah, I, I personally would like to just do ten thousand, because it's, it makes it easier to just split it five and five, because she does come out of two separate budgets. So really, we're only giving her five thousand here, and we give her five thousand on the other budget.
I agree with that.
I agree with that as well.
Okay, I do, too. Is everybody in agreement with that?
And what about now the Administrative Assistant? We never agreed on that.
I think we had agreed on seventy, didn't we, or seventy-five?
Seventy, seventy-five?
I think seventy-five is what would be good.
Councilman Conston?
I think the proposed budget for the, the Chief of Staff is, is good. And I think the Executive Secretary. And I think uh, the executive secretary. Either, you know, an additional ten thousand or put it at fifty thousand with um.
Yeah, I think we've already decided that's gonna be ten thousand. We're just discussing the administrative assistant right now, Councilman.
Yeah, and I think it's as far as the uh, uh, Stephanie Shaki's position, it's. You know, I'd like to hear from the mayor and and what his thoughts are.
He already did that.
Ten thousand.
Okay. All right, um.
So Council Chair, can you uh, give us a rundown of what we accomplished?
Yeah, I will. I I'm keeping track of it. Councilman Baydun?
So, uh, did we agree to seventy or seventy-five? Because I I thought initially.
I don't know. I thought seventy, because I kept hearing people say seventy.
So I I personally would like to see seventy with a three percent increase every year.
Well, you can't do that.
It will be a union. Well, see, you know what happens is the union um, negotiated percentage is also extended to her every year. Over and above. So she will get this raise and she will also get the union raise too, whatever that is proposed.
I I I really want to say that the same uh, council approved before eighty thousand at one time. I think seventy-five will be very fair.
I never did.
No, uh, Councilman, I think it was a it was a proposal at the time. I I know.
No, it was it was approved and the mayor did not give Kim Constant her raise. And we're the city council voted to take it away when.
Oh, you're talking about for Kim Constant?
Page, Councilman. Let's keep it straight here so we don't confuse people. We are on page number nine.
I was in the meeting when the city council approved eighty thousand for that position.
But that was recreation, not this position. We never approved a raise for that position at all.
Council Chair?
Councilman Abdullah?
I I'd like to propose, I I think this is fair. Uh, I've talked to Mary Ann a couple of different different times. Bright guy, bright young woman and very well educated. Um, and since we are not coming to an agreement, why don't we compromise? Just go with seventy-two fives.
Madam Chair?
And then by next year, we'll have had an opportunity to have assessed more and then see where we go from there.
Councilman Baydun, and we gotta get moving here, guys. We're just on one page and we've got.
So are we gonna vote on that?
There's no vote?
No vote.
No vote. We agree on it. What's going to happen tonight, our our lovely clerk's office. Is keeping track of the numbers we are putting out. So let's be clear on them. Now, wishy-washy and bouncing around because they. In the end, um, with the comptroller also is keeping track. The comptroller will make up the final budget and present it to us at a meeting where we vote on it.
So I'm just gonna give one last opinion on that. Then I agree. Then if we're gonna give seventy-two five. We might as well over the, you know, next two hundred and sixty day, three hundred and sixty-five days, a twenty-five hundred dollars. I don't think it's gonna make or break the city. I think that we just give her the seventy-five thousand. We take what the mayor's put on and we move on from that.
I agree.
I mean, I did.
Are we gonna throw hands at least if we agree?
Okay, I'll in favor of seventy-five, raise your hand.
Four of us.
Pardon?
Looks like there's four of us.
Okay, there's four. So yeah, that's enough.
Seventy-five?
Seventy-five.
Congratulations, Marianna.
Okay, next, let's move on. So if we've got Marianna at seventy-five. Uh, Stephanie will get ten thousand raise split between two budgets and the director of grant is seven seventy-six thousand. Next page is fifteen. Fifteen is our next page. We only have one item on that page. And that was a deputy clerk in the city clerk's office is given a three percent raise. Councilman Abdullah? I'm sorry, Abdell Hark.
He keeps raising his hand before me. Anyway, I would like to take uh, three more percent on top of that. I think they done marvelous job and I would like to see her at sixty-two thousand if possible.
Okay, for three percent, fifty-nine, five, five, one. That would be one thousand seven hundred thirty-five dollars and sixty-eight cents to add three percent more.
That would be fine with me.
Okay, we are adding on one thousand potentially, one thousand three hundred, uh, one thousand seven hundred thirty-five dollars and sixty-eight cents. Let me write this down.
They have a proposed uh, proposed salary.
Proposed extra three percent. That's what it would come to.
Yes.
Are you in agree with that, Councilman Muscat?
Yeah, as much work as she does, yeah, e- even more.
Okay, can can you give us the number, Madam Chair?
Okay, I don't have a calculator, but if you take.
I did it.
Do you, Councilman? Point of order, guys. Point of order. Let's keep this, because we're talking numbers. We don't want to get any confusion. We have fifty-nine thousand five hundred ninety-one point seven one. Plus one seven three five dot six eight. What is that?
Okay, that came out to sixty-one thousand three hundred and twenty-seven dollars and thirty-nine cents.
I say make it even sixty-two thousand.
I I agree. Make it an even.
Okay, sixty-two thousand.
I agree.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay, that's the only one on this page. We're all in agreement, sixty-two thousand for deputy clerk one.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Baydun?
I think Councilman Abdullah had something before me, actually. I'm sorry.
Uh, Councilman Abdullah?
Well, originally in the Council, Abdell Hark must have cheated and looked at my notes, but originally it was to. To to give a give a raise to the deputy deputy clerk. I I tell you, the. Earlier in the meeting, we were talking, the ladies in there should have triple their salaries. So I'm okay with with giving a raise and I'm okay with going on a deputy clerk to sixty-two thousand.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Thank you. Councilman Baydun?
Uh, after my favorite clerk of all time, Lynn, my second favorite person in that office is also Dana. And I'm not sure if she is a union employee, but. Let's make sure that they come out strong for her, please.
Okay, yeah, now I'm only reading the non-union employees. We can't touch the union because they are under contract. We are on page nineteen now. There is only two on this page that are non-union. That would be the comptroller and the deputy comptroller.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Abdullah?
Abdell Hark.
I'm sorry, Abdell Hark. You guys are too similar. It just rolls off. It's rolled off for the last four years, so.
I I really would like to do the same thing for the deputy comptroller to sixty-two thousand. She does lots of good work.
Okay, for that one, if we, let me see, if we did three percent, it's also one thousand seven hundred thirty-five and sixty. So you want to make that sixty-two even also?
Even, yes, please.
Everybody in agreement?
Yes.
And as far as comptroller, what's the thoughts on that?
With the eighty thousand, that's a very, very important position. And it's hard, and as we've seen the last few years, uh, we've gone through some comptrollers. Uh, I think we've got a a winner this time and we better hang on to it, so.
Okay. Councilman, let's get everybody else's opinion so we can move along. Anybody else?
Madam Chair?
Agreement? Yeah?
Madam Chair, I I do agree. Mr. Jawad, I think, is doing a outstanding job. I've asked around the throughout the community. I've even asked some of his former employers. Uh, and they spoke really, really highly. And I think just the way he orchestrated himself throughout this budget. With a very short time. I know he's had a lot of assistance through some of his amazing staff members. Uh, but aside, I think uh, Mr. Jawad, Director Jawad did a phenomenal job. So I I and I know I voted on keeping it at the eighty. I think this council should uh, agree to that as well.
All right, you know what I should do at this point? We've got comptroller at eighty and deputy comptroller at sixty-two. If anyone disagrees, please speak up, otherwise we'll move on. Does do you disagree, Councilman Abdell Hark?
No, 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 I agree.
Thank you.
Let's let's move on then. We've got page twenty-one next. There is only one item on page twenty-one and that is the director. And this is H R. This is Elizabeth Sabota Perry.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Baydun, is is everybody okay with the seventy-five? If they want to change it, say something. Otherwise, we'll move on.
Abdell Hark has a raise for her.
Madam Chair?
No, it's Councilman Abdullah.
Okay, because you were speaking first. Okay.
Okay, so so I just want to say, I I've been on the council uh, when uh, our H R director. Uh, decided to take a pay cut. Right, I understand without us asking her for one. This was during the downtimes in the city. And during the hard times in the city and during very little money coming into the city. But in addition to that, her passion. And her experience and the way she always does it with a smile and having been on the council, I'm sorry, uh, in our administration for so long. I think this is a director that I would be totally devastated if she ever left the city. I would like to propose that we move her up to eighty thousand dollars.
I agree. I agree. Everybody agree on that?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, then we are raising Director H R up to eighty thousand.
The most important positions in a city are H R and comptroller.
I I think eighty thousand is up there.
Add something to, did you disagree with that?
No, actually, I was gonna ask for that, uh, to raise her up to eighty. And she cheated, put seventy-five. I asked her to put eighty, so she saw that she put seventy-five.
Well, we got her on that one. She can't touch us now.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate.
You can't do anything to us.
No, I appreciate that. She definitely.
Like, today feels like Christmas.
She's a lifesaver.
All right, let's go on to the next page. She is at eighty thousand. Everybody agrees. Next, we are on page twenty-four. No, please let me say it, twenty-four. Because. Okay, there we have our deputy treasurer is uh, fifty-nine, five, ninety-one, thirty-nine. That is a three percent increase.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Abdell Hark?
I did work uh, in that treasury department. Colleen does excellent work and I believe we should raise her to sixty-two like the rest of the guys.
Great.
Okay, everybody agree on that?
Yes.
I agree.
Yes.
Okay, we were raising Deputy Treasurer to sixty-two. Uh, Treasurer Hicks, did you have something to say in regards to that? We were trying to move along?
I I do. I mean, I just wanted to make sure we're where, when she started that position eleven years ago, she was at fifty-four. So I think sixty, I was gonna ask for that and share that with you all.
Oh, she was at sixty-four?
Was at fifty-four. No, when she started eleven years ago, that's an increase where she is now. Of only thirty-six hundred dollars, actually, three thousand six hundred and five dollars and seventy-two cents. That's an average of three hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventy-nine cents increase annually over eleven years, which is point zero zero six percent. And she does an outstanding job. She's been here for, you know, in the position for eleven years. And I was just gonna share that information with you all.
Thank you.
So now I've been privy to more information. This is one of the things I said during the budget, budget wrap-up is is. I I'd like input from people that work with some of uh, these different employees one-on-one, because sometimes us, actually myself personally, as a councilman. Like, for example, I've never worked directly with the deputy treasurer, so I rely a lot on what they bring to the table. So with the current treasurer telling us this. And with the former previous treasurer telling us that she's doing a great job. Uh, I've just had the opportunity to just meet her, hello, hello, but not one-on-one and haven't been there for eleven years. I'd like to suggest that we move her up to sixty-five thousand dollars.
I I like that better. I think sixty-five is more fair considering the history we just heard.
I agree. I agree with you, Dave.
Okay, let's move Deputy Treasurer to sixty-five. If nobody agrees, we'll move on. I mean, nobody disagrees. Disagrees. Sorry.
Agreement.
All in agreement? Good. We're going on to page number twenty-five next. Let's move along here.
Wait, it can't be twenty-five.
Page twenty-five is um, the part-time was John Riley for seventeen thousand two hundred and fifty, if we remember correctly.
I see, okay.
Yes, that seventeen thousand, it's the fourth line down. John Riley asked us to take it down to fourteen thousand five hundred and twenty. Because that's all that would be necessary.
And that's gonna be council chair for for John Riley specifically, correct?
Right, right. You know, that's the remainder of the time he's gonna be here. So.
Okay.
He is asked. And if anybody disagrees with that, let me know. Otherwise, we're gonna move on.
Madam Chair? Yeah, is that calculated at thirty-five dollars an hour?
That uh, John Riley calculated that, so I'm not gonna question his numbers.
No, I want to make sure he gets thirty-five, not less.
It should be, because that's what it was put in the budget as.
Yeah, I want I want to make sure that he gets the thirty-five because he deserve it. He does lots of good things for the city.
Okay, thank you. I am lowering it, please. Do not speak. Let me take care of this. Go ahead, please.
Oh, Ma- Madam Chair, is that, are we speaking about the treasurer's office budget now?
I am on the treasurer's office budget.
Okay.
It is line item, let me see.
Okay, I I don't have the full budget before me, so I, uh, yeah, that so that was calculated by the treasurer Hicks Clayton. And so, you know, I I I've been trying to assist when I can when we don't have a conflict. So, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, so that is going to be, um, let me read off the line item. Line item one zero one two five three dash seven oh seven dot one hundred is at fourteen thousand five hundred and twenty is what we are putting it at. Next, we have page number twenty-nine. Page number twenty-nine. That is, on this page, we have four. Items, we have the chief, deputy chief. E M coordinator down towards the bottom and police department secretary. Is everybody in agreement with these? And now the E M coordinator and the police department secretary have been raised. Three percent. Or no, they should be three percent.
Which one, Madam?
No, I.
I'm looking at the police department secretary got no raise at all. And it should be three percent.
Uh, I believe she's a, isn't she union?
No, I.
Police Department Secretary is the union.
Let me ask. Nope, she's not. Me and Elizabeth went over these one by one and no, she is not.
That's correct. It's similar to the fire chief secretary is, the police chief secretary is not. So she's similar to Stephanie Shaki's position, the executive secretary in the mayor's office. Um, that this particular position.
Wow. Sounds like.
We have Chief Myers here who would like to chime in. Go ahead, Chief.
I just, I was trying to chime in in case you wondering. Um, that that was completely an error on my part. When I wasn't sure how we did that at the time we were submitting our prospective budgets. Uh, Ms. Lucas, our administrative um, executive here, she is who you see. Um, she uh, through the council orders, when I send them over, when we want to make a purchase, we get approved. She keeps us organized. She's a twenty-plus year employee here at the city. Um, and over the last two years, she has made that one percent raise, so a dollar raise. Um, so I would like to see whatever you would, you and the mayor decide is an appropriate salary. But I don't think we can pay her enough, just like the other um, executive assistants.
If, hold on, please. Hold on, please. And raise your, hold on, please. If you calculate at three percent, she gets one thousand two hundred fifty-four dollars and seventy-two cents. If you choose three percent, it's up to you. Next, I have Councilman Abdullah. Would you like to chime in on this?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to chime on this, but additionally, I think we should, because I you mentioned two or three different positions on the police department. I think it's gonna get. Like a salad. So let's, if you don't mind, if we're doing one at a time.
Thank you. All right.
But I do, but I do want to comment on on that one, if that's what we're doing, I presume.
Okay, let's do that one first and we'll work our way up the thing.
Perfect. So on the police secretary, and again, back to what I mentioned earlier, I'd like to get uh, uh, references or. Or what, how they feel about it, the person that works with them one-on-one. And again, as a council person, I don't work with her one-on-one, but the chief just said. Chief, I think you said fifteen years she's been there?
So she's worked at the police department here since we came to the new building. So two thousand and about six, maybe? Would that be about right when she came over the P G? Elizabeth has it, two thousand and three? Oh, she's on mute. You're on mute.
The chief is saying two thousand, I think, two or three.
Elizabeth's gonna give me the right day.
Okay, with that being the case, it's, I mean, go ahead, Elizabeth. I'm sorry.
Two thousand. She was here in two thousand.
So.
Twenty-one years.
December twenty-seventh of two thousand, yeah.
So if somebody's been there that long, I think two, that's too low of a salary. So I'd like to propose for the police department secretary that we raise her up and maybe the council can decide either forty-eight or even fifty thousand. That's. They gotta get paid.
Agree with fifty. I think fifty is fair.
Yeah.
And I'm liking these even numbers anyways.
That's a twenty percent raise.
Well, yeah, but uh, but.
And never have, and I agree. I agree. And never have, and I agree, I agree with you.
Yeah, but, and, and I get it, I, I don't like twenty percent raises, but at the same time, that somebody's not been getting it, or at least not getting.
I agree with you.
Fair share for the last twenty-plus years. And anybody that's kept in any position with any company for that long, obviously they're doing a pretty good job, otherwise they wouldn't be there. And I'm sure with the different police chiefs that we've had, they've had high standards, otherwise this person possibly could have been gone, so. I'm glad they're saying she's doing a good job and I'm comfortable with fifty.
Okay, is everybody agree with fifty for the Police Department Secretary? Okay, does anybody disagree?
Madam Chair.
Okay, do you disagree?
I just have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Did we say she's a Union?
She's not Union. I'm only reading off non-Union employees today. I've already verified that everybody I'm reading off is not Union.
Thank you, I agree with that fifty.
Okay, we have the EM Coordinator at seventy-five thousand. Does anybody disagree with that?
I do.
You do?
Are we setting this as a cap for salary or we giving this to the EM Coordinator?
That's the cap, that's the salary amount they will be after we approve this budget. Wait a minute, wait a minute, we're still on Councilman Abdallah Hawk.
Sorry.
Go ahead. Councilman?
Really, I, I, I think this is very high increase, twenty thousand dollars. For somebody who's, who's holding this and how long they've been in this position.
That is Lee Gavin.
Okay, I believe this is a very, very high, I would be very comfortable with sixty-two thousand dollars.
Okay, does everybody else agree with the seventy-five or? Would they like to reduce it to sixty-two?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five, Councilman Coniston, Councilman Abdallah.
Well, Ma'am Chair, I'd, I'd like to, again, uh, uh, two things in this particular case. I'd like to, first of all, know who made the proposal. Is this from the, I presume, from the Police Chief or is this from the Mayor's Office? As to who made that proposal. And the second thing is, based on who made the proposal, I'd like to know, and although I have a pretty good idea. But I'd like to know a little bit more specifically, uh, what the general position outlines and the type of job, uh, with due respect to. Uh, former Chief Lee Gavin that he's doing, if you don't mind.
Okay, Mayor, did you wanna answer that?
Uh, thank you. Thank you, Council Chair Protam, also for your question. I'm, I'm the one who actually submitted that, that request for the seventy-five K. And, uh, Mr. Gavin, um, obviously since he's the Emergency Manager, he's been, uh. On the ground running with, uh, especially with COVID. Uh, he's been helping us with, uh, a lot of, uh, uh, things with COVID, a lot of issues. And you know, with the masks, a lot of PPEs and, uh, he's helping a lot of our residents get vaccinated. So, uh, as you, you, you know, you know, um, a city, when they bring in Emergency Managers, it's pretty hard. You know, to really know when they gotta really experience and, or get their really, uh, see what they're really all about. And with this here, this has been a test time for all of us. Uh, he's been, uh, really, uh, working really hard, uh, working long hours. Uh, I, I see it every day. He's always here, you know, he's, uh, early in the day and late at night. Uh, helping us, uh, with, uh, ev- every, everything in the city and to, uh, COVID-related issues. Uh, he's been going to the Dearborn also center where they're doing vaccinations for our Dearborn Heights residents. And there's nothing that, you know, he doesn't do in the city. He's like Jack of all trades, basically, but he really works hard. And I really highly recommend that we approve that seventy-five K. He's really, you know, goes way out above.
Okay, so Mr. Mayor, so two things I try to clarify. So you, you made the proposal, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and then the second thing I wanna clarify, and, and, and then I appreciate what you said about, uh, again, our former Chief, uh, Lee Gavin. Uh, but let's pretend right now, so I can make a better decision. Let's pretend hypothetically, there was no COVID. Okay, and, and no more COVID going forward. What do you feel this position would be able to bring to the city? Is it only during an extreme emergency? That we would need these services in our city or, or when would we need these services? And again, I wanna make something clear, this is no reflection on the person, I'm talking about the position itself. A, the need for it, B, is this a charter thing, and C, what would they be able to bring to the table for the seventy-five thousand?
Yeah, well, that, that's a good question, actually, and, uh, the thing is, it's, it's so hard to predict what really, uh, state of emergency you're gonna get. You know, like some areas, you know, some states, you know, I've seen, you know, been, been all over the world or all over the US. Uh, you don't really know what disasters might come to the city or, you know, municipality. You might have, you know, a flooding issue, you might, you might have some huge catastrophe like a fire. Uh, you know, you might have, God forbid, you know, an airplane might crash, you know, in our backyard. You know, as, I mean, we've seen that happen. I've seen it in my lifetime, the one aircraft that crashed near the airport. You know, that was, that was huge for an Emergency Manager to take on that task. And so you can't really predict what's gonna happen, so we have to be prepared to have an Emergency Manager. So when you do have something like a, a pandemic or even an emergency, state of emergency. That that person can take something, can take it on and help the residents, help the city get, you know, get, I mean, they're always in pre- preparedness mode. Uh, and you know, that's, that's a position, you know, I mean, I know it's out of, uh, the police station. But he's been working here in the City Hall, but, uh, he's doing the same thing, as he's not just doing Emergency Manager, as I mentioned. But you, you never know what's gonna happen. We have to be prepared for the worst case and you do need that position, so.
But if there, but if there's, but if there's no emergency, and, and that's why I'm trying to make a determination. Let's pretend there is no emergency right now, and, and yeah, I, I get that we gotta be prepared for emergency, but let's pretend there is no emergency right now. What would that position, again, the position, what would that position be doing all day or all week if there's no emergency?
Well, I know, I know in the past.
And I'm saying honestly to justify the seventy-five thousand. Can, can I?
Wait, we have to go in order, I'm, you're next, Councilman. We're on Councilman Abdallah right now.
Well, maybe I can assist in answering that question.
That's been directed to the mayor, though, I, I apologize.
Okay, a- again, Council Chair Protam, you always have to be pre- prepared. And as you can see, I mean, got, you know, like say, you know, we have, we have a fire department, okay, so the fire department. You know, if any emergency, they're over there fighting fires, you know, responding to, you know, rescue operations and everything like that. You have the Police Department responding, you know, keeping the peace. So then, e- each person has a position, so with, uh, with, uh, the Emergency Manager. So we always have to be prepared for what might come. The last thing you need is if something, God forbid, something happens, that there's nobody in place. To take that position or to be able to get us out of a, a certain situation. And the Emergency Manager is trained for like all kinds of scenarios that might be thrown at us. You know, I mean, for this COVID, nobody knew that we're gonna get in this COVID. Obviously, we have, we're not out of that, the, that COVID situation yet. But we don't know what can come, you know, our way, as I said, you know, you always have to have a position. Uh, somebody in that position just to make sure that if there's any emergency, that that person can actually. Uh, you know, hi- hit the ground running, they're trained, and they're always training. It's not like, okay, I'm trained, you know, there's always continuous training. There's classes they have to take, uh, different scenarios that they're trained for.
Thank you. Okay, next I have Councilman Badun, go ahead, please.
Thank you so much, and maybe just I can, uh, you know, just kind of inform Councilman Abdallah, and I know you're very informative, so I don't mean to be any disrespectful towards in any way. But I, I have family members that do Homeland Security and, and are, are part of this. And so I just wanna stress onto the, onto my colleagues that this position is actually extremely important. And it's, and the pay with that, what it's at, when I looked at it and seeing that it was at sixty-two thousand, I was actually very surprised to see it as, you know, such a low amount. And look, with, with all due respect to our Director Lee Gavin, I don't know how much longer he's going to be there, but I believe that when we bring in somebody. We need to be able to show that we're, we have a competitive, you know, uh, uh, a good pay, so that, you know, somebody good wants to come work for us. But, uh, you know, so what does the, uh, uh, what does his job entail? I believe he issues out to the state, to the federal government, to the FBI in any state of an emergency. He works with Wayne County, he works with, uh, uh, directly with the Governor's Office if needed at times. Uh, but some things even as small as GFL, I, I get so many complaints from GFL. The first call I make is to our Director, uh, Lee Gavin, and, and let me tell you, with the second I call him, the second that, that issue is resolved. And I, you know, and I don't know who to call a- at that given time. Am I calling the Chief of Staff? Am I calling, you know, the, the, this, you know, the, the Executive Secretary? Am I calling the mayor? Not many people are able to take on those positions. Uh, so when I'm reaching out to our Director Gavin, honest to God, it's done in seconds. E- even, even if it means that with his personal vehicle, driving to a resident's house and picking up their trash, putting it in his personal vehicle, I swear he did that. And to me, sixty-two thousand dollars doesn't work that, especially for that position, because I don't know how much longer he's gonna be with the city. I mean, I hope another twenty, thirty years. Uh, but do we see him here for another twenty, thirty years? I, I, I definitely don't see that. And, and let's also keep in mind with inflation and everything that's happening. Paying somebody sixty-two thousand dollars as a Director position, it, it, it's just not fair. Especially, it, it's, it's just not fair. And, and anytime I've walked into City Hall, he's in there all day. Uh, so we also need to think of the future and we wanna think about the people that are gonna bring into City Hall. I think seventy-five thousand is still very low, but I think that's fair enough.
At this time, let's try and streamline this, um. We have all agreed seventy-five is there. Next, we have the Chief and the Deputy Chief. I calculated it and they both are getting just a three percent raise. The Chief would be at one thousand, one hundred and four thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars and seventeen cents. And the Deputy Chief would be a total of two budgets of ninety-three thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Do you agree to that? Or does anybody disagree with those amounts? Okay, let's move on. I do have the mayor. Mayor, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I just wanna add, uh, sorry, I just do two things, uh, I, I thought we're not gonna mention people's names in this meeting. It's embarrassing when we keep mentioning people's names, you know, I'd like, if you guys can refrain from mentioning people's names, but you can just refer, uh, for the title.
And also. Sorry, that wasn't my intentions to disrespect anybody.
No, no, thank you. No, it's just not you, just Councilman Badun, it's, uh, I've, I've heard others, people keep mentioning people's names. I don't like to do that. Also, you know, the Emergency Manager has been doing the CAP program, as you know, there's a lot of city property we're trying to get rid of or sell. And, uh, so, uh, with, when we had the lead issue, you know, I mean, we all know about the flat water issue with the lead. So, uh, that, that position or the Emergency Manager is helping us with that as well, with the lead, you know, with the filters and that. So there's, there's, there's a lot of, it's a lot of things that the, the title is doing or that position. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on. Let's see what the next page is, twenty-five.
Twenty-fiver.
Whoa, 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 I'm sorry. I don't know why I've got twenty-five written there, twenty-nine. We're on that now, and so we're moving to thirty-one.
Yes.
Page number thirty-one, there is only one position on here, but there's two. I gotta ask, um. Wait a minute, wait a minute. I'm gonna ask the Director Sabota Perry, I think we might have messed up on this one. I'm gonna ask you. Would that be the Chief, the Deputy Chief?
No, just one, just one, just the Chief.
Okay, that's what I had. Okay, the Chief is the only non-Union person. They have requested a three percent raise up to ninety-three thousand, five hundred and sixty-six dollars. And ninety-nine cents. If anyone disagrees with that, please speak up. If not, we'll move on. Councilman Abdallah.
I just want to double check the Grant Coordinator is still also Unionized? It is, okay, so it looks like Elizabeth is saying that, uh, so. Mister or Mrs. Union, take a look at that position. I'll leave it at that.
Okay, at this time, does everybody agree with the ninety-three thousand, five hundred and sixty-six dollars and ninety-nine cents?
Yes.
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 Okay, let's move on to page number thirty-three.
Ma'am Chair.
We're on page number thirty-three. Here we have Director. Then I'm going to ask the mayor if he has anything, cause he's raised his hand, but.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm so sorry, I was gonna, actually, before you guys voted, I'm the one for the, the, the. I said, the Fire Chief. Um, since, you know, I, again, you know, when we submitted this, I was like, just a couple of weeks, two, three weeks on the job. Uh, I've seen a lot of things that the Chief has, uh, has been doing. Uh, I know it, it's not like nine-to-five job for him. I know he's texting me in like late at night, you know, on the weekends, that he's always on the road. I'd like to see if we can increase that from the ninety-three, five to six, five sixty-six if possible.
Yeah, I think we've already agreed on it, and I look back, and the Fire Chief is, I'm sorry, the Chief of Police is also getting three percent, so to keep it consistent. I think we should keep it where it's at right now, but other councilmembers already agreed on it, um. I, I just think it's fair and I don't wanna keep backtracking.
Yeah, sorry, Madam Chair, I wanted to actually bring that up before you guys voted, but thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, so this, we have the Director in the Building Department. Sixty-five thousand, raising it up to seventy-five thousand. Is anybody in disagreement? Councilman Muscat?
Yes, I am. This is, uh, this is a, uh, position that is close to my heart. Our previous directors, uh, the one that we, uh, had for many years, was making over eighty thousand dollars a year. Uh, back in two twelve, I believe, uh, and they, they went, they took these salaries down to fifty-four, fifty-five thousand, I mean. I, I think, I, I don't know which one it was, but it's one of the two, and, uh, this is definitely an eighty thousand dollar a year job.
So you're proposing eighty thousand, Matt?
Yeah, the Director is a, a master electrician for, you know, he can go get a job and make a hundred grand anywhere.
Alright, let's streamline this. Anybody disagree with the eighty thousand? If not, we're gonna move on to the next page. Okay, we are raising this up to eighty thousand. And next, we are. We've got number thirty-four, let me make sure, cause I don't have anything. I've got, see, I've got something highlighted on thirty-four and I'm gonna have to ask. Nope, nope, sorry. Okay, thirty-five, thirty-five, disregard thirty-four, that was an error. Thirty-five, we have Director of Ordinance raising them to seventy-five thousand. If anybody is in disagreement, speak up, otherwise we will move on. This is for council. This is council deciding at this point. Anybody in disagreement? So we have Director of Ordinance at seventy-five thousand.
Ma'am Chair.
Councilman Abdallah.
So I'm not gonna disagree, but I'm gonna say it straight up. I'm gonna have, personally, with whatever I could do within my power. High, high standards for the Ordinance Department to kick it up another ten notches. They're getting, you know, there's a raise coming there, but I'm gonna expect some very, very high standards from Deputy Department. And from the Mayor's Administration to make sure, not because they're doing a bad job, because they're doing a pretty good job. But our city's got a lot of issues as far as ordinances that are concerned, a lot of issues as far as trash is concerned, a lot of issues as far as landscaping is concerned. And I, I hope we kick this up another notch or two. Thank you.
Thank you, let's, let's get moving here. On this page, we also have the other half. Of the Secretary in the Mayor's Office, that remember we said five thousand was split between the two, so I wanna note. That the Secretary here is actually, half of her salary is paid for out of this account. And that would make it five thousand more instead of the, um, twenty-one thousand, six thirty-six. It would be twenty-six thousand, six thirty-six and twenty-nine cents.
Thank you.
Just to make that, just to clarify that. Next, I have page number thirty-seven. We only have one on this one. And that would be the Director. This is DPW Highway Director. And they're gonna raise to eighty-four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two dollars. If anyone disagrees, please speak up, otherwise we will move on to the next page.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Badun?
I, I think, you know, we're at eighty-four, eight seventy-two. I think it's fair to say we can make this an eighty-five thousand dollars flat. I mean.
Everybody agree, everybody agreed to eighty-five thousand?
Sounds good to me.
If nobody disagrees, if you do disagree, speak up now, otherwise I'm moving forward to page number thirty-nine. Page number thirty-nine, we have got three positions on this. One is the Director, one is the Deputy Director. And one is the Senior Coordinators. Uh, the Director currently is at sixty-three thousand, eight hundred. And we will be raising it to eighty thousand. Anyone disagrees?
Councilor.
Let me finish speaking, please. Let me speak, let me finish speaking, please. Okay, it says sixty-three thousand, eight hundred, we're raising it up to eighty thousand. If anyone disagrees with that exact amount, please speak up.
Council Chair, my paper says fifty-seven, eight, fifty-five, seventy-two. I don't know why, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, we gave her the raise a couple of weeks ago, remember? So this is current. This is the current amount.
What is now? What, what did you quote it up?
Yeah, we, this is what we approved her to get a few weeks. Yeah, we, this is what we approved her to get a few weeks ago after the budget was made. She is actually, yeah, sixty-three thousand, eight hundred.
Okay, that's all I've been wanting to see.
I made sure I got the correct amount, because I knew we gave her a raise, and I didn't, you know, and this budget was correct when it came out. I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of what the correct amount is now, sixty-three thousand, eight hundred. We're raising it to eighty. Any disagreement? Councilman Abdullah?
Well, i- if you don't mind, Council Chair, either you or HR, because I, I remember when we had, um, you know, switching positions, we had a couple of different changes in the Recreation Department, based on the proposal from Mayor's Office. Um, can you give us those numbers first? Because on the, on the budget, like Councilman Ray Muscat just said, is different numbers. I know there was changes that were higher. So can we have those numbers maybe from HR first before I, I? Well, we got sixty-three for the Director, but the Deputy Director, as I, as I recall, that position was changed and that number was raised also. So what was the Deputy Director's, as of a week or two ago?
O- okay, so just to clarify, the Director's salary was a restoration of the original ten percent back in the day, okay? And so that it's slightly rounded, um, as that figure, it, it was sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars and seventy-eight cents. That's sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars and seventy-eight cents. And that was based on the motion a few weeks ago. And then with regards to the Deputy, there was a, when there was a amendment at that point, but you already, it's reflected in that, because that was back in Sep- uh, starting in September, in February. And so fifty-four thousand is accurate on that particular budget.
All right.
Thank you.
So, so, we, we, no, no, the Council Chair, if you don't mind, and please correct me if I'm wrong. I could have sworn that the Deputy Director was raised at the time when we had a switch in positions.
So, that is true, because it was a lower salary. And, um, originally, actually, the Director was at a lower salary. Um, and that salary as of July first of twenty nineteen was fifty-one thousand, five hundred dollars.
And the Deputy Director was always at fifty-four for the last year or so?
Well, um, so that, that, that was another, the Deputy Recreation, um, the Deputy Recreation Director, that position had, like many, the position had taken a cut back in two thousand and eleven. Um, some incremental amounts over the years. Um, and then like in twen- uh, the July first of twenty twenty, um, so July first of twenty twenty, that amount was fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars. So that's what it would have been budgeted, but we had that amendment when we had a personnel change. So I would add that instead of what that proposed salary is, that's really what it should be currently. It is not, because it was only budgeted at fifty-four thousand with that budget amendment. But then that salary should probably be, you know, realigned with what you're doing with the other, with the other deputies, if you will.
I agree.
Councilman Muscat?
Yes, uh, again, this was one of the salaries that was capped, uh, with, because of retirement, uh, back in two thousand and eleven, twelve. And, uh, remember, the Deputy Director position was given a raise that was not uh, okayed by the former administration. So, uh, there's, uh, quite a bit of discrepancy there in the Deputy Director's uh, salary. And, uh, uh, actually, what is being proposed now is I'm okay with.
Deputy Director, I'm saying, shoot. We've been rounding everybody else off. Why don't we make that just sixty thousand?
I'm okay with that.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, and do either Councilman Abdell Hock, do you disagree with that?
I strongly disagree with that. I, I just like to keep it as this, seven, fifty-seven, eight, five, six, oh three, as it is requested.
Okay, Councilman Wensel, did you disagree with that?
He's muted.
I've already asked him to unmute Councilman, unfortunately, he's not doing it.
No, I don't, I don't disagree with it. I, I just wanted to make a statement that our current Deputy Director, when he was Director, he, he, he's owed some kind of kudos, because he took this job and, uh, during the COVID, um, all the stuff that was going on. And I think he doesn't get the recognition that he deserves. He did a great job, and we're, we're really lucky that he's staying on with us as Deputy Director.
So at this time, we have Councilman Abdell Hock disagreeing with the sixty thousand. Does anybody else disagree? Then I guess we will do it to sixty thousand. We do have a Senior Coordinator that is thirty-five thousand, staying at thirty-five thousand. There's no raise on that one.
Madam Chair.
Councilman, this is a new position they're creating. It's just starting.
I know. Thank you. What I'm asking is, can either the mayor, either the mayor or, uh, the Director Constance speak on this? And just kinda give us what this job entails and?
I think Director Constance.
Position.
Director Constance, I would think would have more knowledge, because it's directly her department.
Thank you. She's very knowledgeable.
Hi, um, good, how are you? Um, basically, what that position's gonna be is programming for the senior center. Um, I was actually made, um, available one position starting in the new year, which actually works out really well. Um, because the current Coordinator that I have is going to test for that position as well. And, um, the seniors really love her. She does a great job. So when she tests, if she ends up in the top three, that will, that'll be wonderful. But, um, so it's working out, just starting with one. I, I just wanna say that first. Um, but this person's going to be programming for the seniors. They're going to be, um, kind of managing the center as well. The issue that I've had throughout the years, and this is an issue that we had even when I was a deputy, that, um, the hours that that position requires goes way over the twenty-eight hours a week that were allotted for the part-time position. So I wasn't able to have consistency and, um, uh, have somebody there that, you know, a regular face all week that the seniors could count on. And this will afford us to be able to do that. We did the cut as far as making the positions part-time when we were going through financial difficulty. And, um, uh, now we're at a point where it's actually really to the best interest, because the, the issue is, um, they are already working additional hours, the ones that really love their job. And, um, I hate to ask that from them, because they are going over for the twenty-eight hours, but they're, you know, not asking to be paid for it. But I'm actually, when I talk about that, referring to my current coordinator that I have, uh, the position at the Eaton Center is currently open, and I will be interviewing tomorrow, um, for part-time people. And we're gonna start, um, with that. And, uh, I think this process will allow me, um, to set up a really good staff for the senior centers. So I don't know if I answered your question, if you have anything else?
Has a question.
Uh, Council, thank you, Council Chair. This is different than a Recreation Coordinator, correct?
Correct. She or he will just be at the senior center and programming the events at the senior center.
And this is a new position for Senior, Senior Coordinator?
Correct. And I don't have a position in there, because, um, uh, the way that it's gonna work out, um, when they test, and, and I don't know if Patty, oh, I'm sorry, I shouldn't say her name. I don't know if the Coordinator at the Berwin Center has decided to test for the position or not. Um, but she may, and then if she ends up, um, uh, doing well, um, she will be able to remain at the Berwin Center as a full-time person. And then at that point, um, then I'll work on, uh, doing something for the Eaton Center. But, um, doing it this way is gonna work out well, because, you know, I, the person I have at the Berwin Center is a very good person. Um, so I'm hoping that doing it this way will, will make the whole thing work out. It's really complicated unless I go into real detail about it, but hopefully you get my idea.
I'm okay with all the salaries, just the way they are now.
Okay, Councilman Wensel, you're next. And Council, I'm Director Constance. Don't mute yourself after this, because I got a question for you on the next page.
Uh, yeah, Director Constance, um, is this position only for one center or both centers?
It, it's for one center, and, um, it will actually benefit, uh, me to do it this way, only because, um, I want the current Coordinator that we have at the Berwin Center to test for the position. Um, if you're familiar with the civil service process, you have to test for it and end up in the top three. Um, so she has expressed some interest in testing, but she's, um, not a hundred percent sure, and she would like to remain part-time if she doesn't do well on the test, if she chooses to do the test. It's really confusing, but that's kind of where it is. So it actually affords me to be able to keep the best of what we have. And I think most of you know the Coordinator at the Berwin Center, and the seniors absolutely love her. And I don't wanna, uh, lose her, so I'm gonna respect her wishes and do it whichever way she requests.
Thank you.
At this point, I'm gonna read out loud. We have the Director eighty thousand, Deputy Director sixty thousand, Senior Coordinator thirty-five thousand. If no one disagrees, I will move on. Okay, now I'm going to bring up page forty, and the reason I'm bringing this up is because, um, Director Constance was not here. And I did have a question during the budget hearing on this one item. And it is called Spirit Fest. You have put in forty-four thousand dollars, eight hundred for the Spirit Fest. And are we having one?
Well, that, that's for July one, for the new budget year. And, um, yes, I would have it, but that's actually not for the current one that I just canceled. And then if you recall, I transferred that money, and you guys approved it to go into the capital outlay budget. So y- this budget that's coming up is, is a different festival, and it would actually be twenty-two. That would be the money for twenty-two.
Okay, that's, that's what I wanted to hear. I figured that, but you weren't here to ask that.
I apologize for that, but I actually had a court hearing for something else, so I wasn't able to, uh, finish the, uh, meeting, so.
No problem. Next page is forty-one. This is Recreation Coordinator. Um, there is no, excuse me?
Is it union position?
No, it's civil service.
All of these that I'm mentioning, I've already verified, they are not union positions. I just wanna say that again.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Picky in that, um, very picky. So this is for the Recreation Coordinator. Apparently, there is no raise given at all. Um, I'm thinking it should be at least three percent, because we've given everybody else a raise. At three percent, they would get a raise of one thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine dollars and twelve cents.
Yes. Forty-one, one sixty-nine, seventy-three cents.
Well, we're gonna give them the raise. What is it again, Councilman?
It's forty-one thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine dollars and seventy-three cents.
Everybody in agreement with that? We'll move on if you are.
Yes.
Okay, next page I have is page forty-four. And this is where the full-time cable person is in, at forty-one thousand, six hundred. If I'm looking at this, I've got this, these notes. And we were supposed to readdress it at this meeting. Somebody brought it up at the budget meeting last Friday. Does anybody recall?
Uh, the only thing I'm concerned with is if the money's not coming, to pay the salaries from the peg fee. And I guess Gary Miyake's got his hands up to weigh in on.
Sure does. Go ahead, Co- Corporate Counsel.
Actually, I have my hand up to weigh in on that issue. Uh, although I'll weigh on it if I can hear again what the issue was. I was asking if I could be excused uh, from the meeting, since it doesn't appear that. Oh, you want me to stay now?
I'm gonna torture, torture, we're gonna make you stay. I'm just teasing. You can go if you want. I know, we only have a few more pages. I really don't see a problem.
Uh, well, do you want me to answer the, any, any question on the peg stuff, or is that unnecessary now? Because?
Madam Chair.
I got Councilman Muscat here first.
I just don't want the, the salaries being paid out of peg fees. They've gotta be paid out of the franchise fees. So, and, and I don't see that here on how it is, and if maybe Mariana could, uh, I think she's shaking her head.
If I mute, Mariana, go ahead, please.
Uh, that's correct, uh, Councilman Muscat. We will not be using the peg funds to pay for the salaries. At this point, it will be coming from the reimbursement from the cable, so it's like wow, and so on.
Yeah, we should be done with this page.
I have a note on here from when we, it needs to be read- addressed today. Uh, let me see, I put forty-four on here. I don't know what that means.
Oh, uh, sorry. So the, the number that I discussed with, uh, Bob Ankrapp and, um, Mr. Lee Gavin was forty-seven thousand for that full-time salary position. But we would also have to decrease one of the part-time positions, because it would be one full-time and one part-time.
So where are we at on this? Do you have a line item that we can write it down on?
Salaries? Uh, sorry.
And who's gonna be the supervisor?
At the moment, it is Bob Ankrapp.
So that comes with his thirty-five dollars an hour, or whatever it was that we signed before. The part-time job that he's doing, correct? Uh, Council, uh, Council Chair, I believe we had that noted somewhere.
Yeah, I know. Like I said, when we went through the budget last Friday, I wrote down, we need to readdress this today, and I, it was towards the marathon, and I'm trying to remember. We have Shontay here. Go ahead, please.
I just wanna make sure I'm following. I think Mariana's looking for a line item for the full-time salary employee. Is that what she's looking for?
Doesn't exist, yeah.
Definitely. I was gonna say, it's not, it's, we have to create it. It will be one-on-one. Eight zero nine, seven oh six, zero zero zero.
I found my notes here.
Okay, is that where the forty-seven thousand will go?
It, it came, it, it was scheduled for Bob Ankrapp for his thirty-five dollars an hour part-time. And, uh, that's where it, uh, came from.
Okay. So let's clarify for the Comptroller and Clerk's Office to make sure they can follow through with us on the one oh one dash eight oh nine dash seven oh six dot zero zero zero, forty-seven thousand, is that line item?
Yeah, we have to create, yeah, seven oh six is for full-time employees, yes.
Okay, so that's what we were addressing on this page. Is that it?
Are you asking me? You're, you're a council member. Sorry.
Councilman Muscat, is that it?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, next, we will move on to page number forty-five, which I have a question here to ask John Riley on the salaries for one oh one dash nine five five dash seven oh six dash zero zero zero. It's the General Government Employee Pension. Here's John Riley. I'm gonna unmute him.
Hello, Madam Chair.
Uh-oh, you muted yourself.
Okay, in the General Government Pension, there, um, there is currently no administrator for that, uh, job. And so the thought was, is to create a job that is shared between the Police and Fire Pension and the General Government Pension, so that there is a pension administrator that's working both those jobs. I am gonna be stepping down at the end of June from the Police and Fire. And again, I've been working and doing a lot of the general government stuff for free for, since I, my retirement. And so it's necessary to have an administrator do oversee the pensions.
Yeah, we had a thing that we were gonna readdress this, so I guess that takes care of that. Let's go on to number forty-six. And I got another salary. Is that, is that also the same?
Yes, well, it's not salaries. It's really a part-time, right? It's, both of those are listed under part-time. This is a part-time position that's going to be, um, hired by the Pension Boards to work between both systems.
Okay, thank you. Okay, last page, everyone.
Madam Chair, if I may, I have the breakdown of each of the line items for General Government Employee Pension. Madam Chair, if I may, I have the breakdown of each of the line items for General Government Employee Pension as they change with the amendments that John Riley has made. May I break those down for the council?
Now, John Riley, when you made these amendments, where was that amendment made at?
Well, I, I mean, I originally have spoken with Mariana and the uh about Budry, Bodri, and then I came before the council uh previously to talk about this. Is that right?
Are all the numbers on this page correct then? Number forty-six?
I do not have the current budget. I could go through though. Do you, Mariana, do you have?
I have it in front of me, so if I may, I can read those.
Okay, because we're going off the current budget that was submitted on April first.
Exactly, so those amendments happen during, those amendments happen during budget hearings. So yes, I can tell you what the new changes would be based on the budget hearings.
Okay, go ahead. That's line item one oh one dash nine five six dash seven oh six dot zero zero zero. Is there any amendment to that?
That should be.
It's zero.
Zero? Okay, then we have one oh one dash nine five six dash seven oh seven dot one zero zero.
Forty-seven.
That's correct.
Oh, it's one zero zero, nine five six dash seven oh seven dot one zero zero.
Forty-seven thousand.
Yes.
Forty-seven. And then we've got one oh one dash nine five six dash seven two six dot zero zero zero.
Thirty-five, twenty-five.
Three thousand five hundred and twenty-five?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and I think that's it.
No, there's one, there's one addition of a supplies line item of one oh one, nine five six, seven two eight point zero zero zero, five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
I've got it. Okay, I think we're done with this page.
Madam Chair, do we, did we want to do that same thing with the general plan? Uh, what we did, it'll just take a minute. There's only two, two line items or three.
Yeah, which which page was that on again? Was that forty-five?
The thing is the page before.
Yeah.
Yeah, forty-five.
That's the General Government Employee Pension. Which two lines are you changing?
Okay, it's, uh, we have one oh one, nine five five, seven oh six point zero zero zero. That should be zero.
Okay.
Then you have a, uh, adding a part-time line item of one oh one, nine five five, seven oh seven point one hundred. That's the thirty, twenty-three thousand five hundred.
Seven oh seven.
Seven, there is none. Are you creating a new line?
Yeah, yeah, creating a part-time line item.
One oh one, nine five five, seven oh seven. Could you give me the rest again?
Point one hundred.
Okay, and that's for how much?
Twenty-three thousand five hundred.
Got it.
How much?
Twenty-three thousand five hundred.
Can you repeat the number, please?
One oh one, nine five five, seven oh seven point one hundred.
What is that job?
That's the pension administrator position.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdul Haq.
Thank you.
You, you have been ignoring me for a couple of times.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize that.
That's okay. Uh, the pension administrator salary, is it coming from the pension or we pay and then the pension reimbursing us?
Uh, the three and forty-five reimburses the city. The General Government Pension uh gets paid through the city's general fund.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Councilman Abdul Haq, did you have any further questions before I move on?
No, no, thank you.
Okay, well.
Madam Chair, there's one other line item. We have to, one of, one, the one last line item on there, one oh one, nine five five, seven two six, zero 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 should be uh eighteen thou- eighteen hundred and fifty dollars.
Which one was that?
Is that a thirteen fifty?
Yeah, but yeah, one oh one, nine five five, seven two six, from thirteen fifty to eighteen fifty.
Eighteen fifty?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Am I ready to move on?
Yeah.
We are on the last page. And on this last page, which is number forty-eight, every position on here is non-union. There is not one union position on here, so look at the pit salaries. I'm going to start off with saying if everybody agrees on the salaries as they are presented to us right now, we will be done. Um, if you don't, please speak up. Everybody's in agreement with the salaries on this page?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we are done. At this point, I do open it up to public comment. I ask you limited to two minutes and you raise your hand. I have, oh boy, hold on, we've got a lot of people. Alan Basset, uh, you have two minutes. State your name, where you live. Go ahead, please.
Yeah, this is uh Alan Basset, Hickory Wood Street. Uh, I'm inquiring about the uh Police Department budget. Uh, I noticed on there uh that you guys didn't discuss it, the Deputy Chief's position, as you stated. Uh, we still noticed that it was at half. Just curious uh what the status is with that, if that's an eliminated position. If you guys are seeking to fill that from the outside, what what the plan is uh with that.
Oh, you know what? Okay, that that will be on page number twenty-nine. I'm sorry, I forgot about that. Do we want to make that a full-year salary? It's only at half a year salary right now.
Madam Chair.
Councilman, uh, Badun?
I I believe I actually brought it up at our budget hearing. Yes, I would love to kiss, keep that and see that as a full-time position and not a part-time position. And I'd love for my colleagues to agree with me and vote on that with me as well.
I I agree. Um, does everybody else agree that this should be a full-time one hundred percent instead of that fifty percent and keep the position?
Madam Chair.
Okay, does it, okay, I should go this route. Does anybody disagree with page twenty-nine, keeping the Deputy Chief on and not eliminating the position?
I have a question, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Councilman Abdul Haq.
I would like to hear from the mayor and from the chief, why the mayor wants to make it uh, you know, half-time and why the Chief of Police wants to keep it full-time.
Okay. Mayor, would you like to speak in regards to that?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know in the past, you know, we had uh, again, you know, I don't have all the history, but in the past, we didn't have the position or that position was actually doing the emergency manager's job uh way back in the day from my understanding. And uh, as I mentioned in uh in one of the meetings that uh we've had uh, you know, for the last three years, uh, I just want to make sure that the mayor's office, uh, me or whoever, you know, has actually a say-so of uh the promotions that actually go, uh, uh, we we've had, you know, several residents uh uh concerned in the past when uh we had the three uh police chiefs in the, I mean, less than three years, you know, we had three police chiefs in the position. You know, just going up the rank and I just want to make sure it's fair for everybody else and.
I agree with that.
Yeah, and that's, that's one of the reasons, you know, I just want to make sure that the mayor's office, you know, has a say-so. It's not like, you know, uh, people promoting whoever they want to promote, you know, wanted to keep it reasonable for everybody else.
So Madam Chair, can I ask a quick question?
Wait, wait, hold on, please. Let me speak. At this time, what you're telling us is Deputy Chief, I understand they are going to be retiring. Is that correct? Mayor?
Uh, my understanding in in December.
Okay, at that time, you will not be replacing that Deputy Chief. You're just going to let it go away. Is that correct?
We wanted to, we can reassess it at that time. I just wanted to see if uh, wanted to look at, like I said, all the budget and that the job responsibility for that position. And as I mentioned before, that position was uh, you know, again, you know, I'm up for for promotions, but I just want to make sure that the staff, you know, get a fair, uh, I guess, uh, promotion and, you know, uh, their stuff, obviously, you know, we can discuss it in a closed session, you know, I don't want to discuss personnel in an open session, but that's one of the reasons.
Personnel can be discussed in an open session if you're discussing wages and stuff. Personnel isn't a closed session only if there's disciplinary action or a union issue with that particular employee. And I don't see either one of these being the case since that's a non-union job. We would be in violation of the Open Meetings Act if we had a closed study session on that.
Madam Chair, I got a question.
Okay, I understand. We've got Chief Myers here wanting to chime in and this is his department. Go ahead, Chief.
So I think there's two issues or a couple of issues that should be addressed. One is um currently under collective bargaining agreements under Act Seventy-Eight. The Deputy Chief spot is tested for, so I'm not sure, um, I'd love to have this conversation um even it more in-depth. Um, I'm not sure where the unfairness is coming when you test for uh Deputy Chief. Um, it is through the Act Seventy-Eight Civil Service Process that eliminates nepotism, cronyism and favoritism. It's done impartially by a panel that's uh solicited through the H R. So I, as Chief of Police, do not appoint the Deputy Chief is tested through the union. Um, so making sure the right person is there starts early on um as we hire police officers um as new employees and they get promoted up through the ranks. Um, I also believe that it should be budgeted for. If the mayor chooses not to fill it, that will be his choice. But when you don't budget for a position that's contractually guaranteed, I think you run into some labor issues when you don't negotiate that. I could be wrong. I'm not a labor lawyer, but I believe by cutting it out um of a budget automatically doesn't allow you to negotiate it fairly to remove the position. Uh, so I caution that. Um, I also believe the workload in law enforcement, the tasks that we have, the supervision that you need, yes, we eliminated the Deputy Chief position about fifteen years ago. It got replaced four years ago um because of the workload, because of a letter of understanding between the unions and the administration at that time. Um, and I believe the workload um is only going up. Um, I've provided a list of the responsibilities of the Deputy Chief. I believe it's a valuable position. Um, I also want to uh point out that um, as we move forward in this, the Deputy Chief spot, um, there was a concern about how many chiefs we've had and we always throw around the number of, oh, there's been four chiefs in this repetitive. Well, to to be honest, and this is me speaking honestly to the chief, there was a long-term chief. There was two very short-term chiefs. And then there's the chief that you have right now that's here for the average amount of time of chiefs of police across the state of Michigan, which is three to five years. Um, I understand two are short, but when we say we had four, we really had two short-term ones. That's really what the issue was. We had two short-term chiefs. We had an extremely long-term chief, which is very rare in law enforcement in the state of Michigan. So I I I understand the concern that the community has that there's this, you know, that there was a a high turnover for eighteen months. But that wasn't the case for ten years before and it's not the case for the next thirty-six months. Um, God willing and uh help for everybody, me included. Uh, so I I don't think that's a fair statement when it's it's brought up. I believe we had two short-term ones, but we had two very stable. Um, so I hope that uh explains that a little bit. Um, there are some contractual and labor issues that should be addressed. Um, I don't know if this was the best place to do it, but I feel it's my my role as the Chief of Police to protect the hiring process, the civil service process and the ability for officers here at the Police Department to live out their career goals, to be promoted through this department and be able to promote to the highest levels of law enforcement after serving honorably and dedicated to this city and their residents. And I think taking away this position is the start of removing that ability and I I completely against it.
Madam Chair, for my question.
Okay, Councilman Badun, and then I have Councilman Muscat and Councilman Abdullah. Councilman Abdul Haq, I'm not sure if you were doing public comment or if you were going to comment on this, but go ahead, Councilman Badun.
So so my question is maybe to the mayor, maybe we can budget for it. Uh, you know, and then, you know, being it from what the, whether the mayor wants to move on with that position or not come December. But I believe that, you know, with respect to the mayor's office and to the Chief of Police's office, we should, you know, you know, definitely ask the mayor if he'd allow us to, uh, you know, if he'd be in support of that as well.
Councilman Badun, this is a city council budget session. We are the ones that make the decision at this point. The mayor has already put the budget out. We can agree with it or we can disagree with it. That's how we do these.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Muscat. Go ahead, please.
Uh, first thing, I keep hearing union contracts being thrown around, so why are we even discussing it, okay, if it's a union thing? And but my concern is Act Seventy-Eight itself. I I think it 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 limits us uh into hiring just from within and it limits us from trying to get the first best person possible from wherever we can get them. Um, a- and if that's the case, we should uh keep a position open in case we want to go a different route in the future.
Myers, would you like to chime in on that?
No, I I'm good. There, everybody has, I'm here just to say I believe that the position should be funded so we have the opportunity to follow um our standards.
Madam Chair, I did not finish really my question, but.
Okay, go ahead, please.
I will wait.
Go ahead. No, go ahead, Councilman Abdul Haq, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Uh, does the mayor has the power to terminate uh the chief or the deputy chief or any of the captain of, or it is contractual?
I'm sorry, we couldn't hear you. What did you say?
Does the mayor have the power by the charter to terminate Chief of Police or Deputy Chief?
I think that would have been a Miyake question. Um, Mayor, would you like to answer that? Do you know the answer?
No, I think that would be Mr. Miyake's question. I'm not.
Elizabeth.
Or or Elizabeth, H R Director.
Elizabeth's got her hand up. Go ahead, please.
I again, so with regards to termination, so there is a process. So most of the positions that you listed, um, I think you said lieutenant, captain, those are, those follow the the collective bargaining agreement. So you have some level of progressive discipline or if it was a matter, usually that's handled by the actual police chief, the chain of command, right, with regards to any sort of termination of the that regard. And then with regards to the appointing authority, who is the mayor according to the Act Seventy-Eight rules and how it is um in our, in our charter and the rules in the state rules, in the state law, the the mayor is the appointing authority. He could terminate, but the police chief has an appeal through Act Seventy-Eight and that is also true for the other chief, which is of the fire. Um, so again, Act Seventy-Eight is Public Act Seventy-Eight of the state of Michigan, nineteen thirty-five. So we have our incorporation of the city follows Act Seventy-Eight and there's a particular process if you were to, if you were to try to eliminate Act Seventy-Eight.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, I have Councilman, uh, Councilman Abdul Haq, are you done?
I'm done. Thank you, ma'am.
Councilman Abdullah.
Um, I know I spoke with a couple of different parties in regards to this, uh, that were involved with this. And one of the concerns on one end was, you know, the the Police Department is top-heavy. And so maybe it's better instead of having this type of position, take uh that type of position salary and then uh put in more police officers. On the other hand, there's another argument as to uh Deputy Chief's position, of course, being prepared to be able to take on this chief and then also maintaining the car fleet and the building management. The question I have is, uh, it was mentioned that at one point in two thousand and four and prior, if I'm not mistaken on the year, but I could be wrong with the year, there was no Deputy Chief position until most recently. The question I would have is for our uh former police chief, uh, Lee Gavin, I presume that was the, that must have been during your time. And I'd like your input as far as how did that work out and how would, how did you feel about? I had a Deputy Chief at the time as far as uh and how that would work out in today's times. Because you're somebody that's tried that without a Deputy Chief.
Go ahead, sir.
So Council in the past, back when I was a chief early on, we had a chief and one captain. That made it very difficult. Like everyone's seeing in this day and age, there's more administrative responsibilities, more accountability, more this and that. So the more positions up at the top kind of helps us all as a community, you know, you can disperse some of those duties. Um, so when there was just me in in one captain and back then it was, you know, a financial situation. And uh, it was kind of difficult. Back in the heyday, even before my time, you had a chief, a deputy and three captains. So we worked our way back up and then after I'd left, you know, part of the, the agreement when I'd left. They brought back a deputy chief. There was two deputy chiefs at the time and then when Chief Altitony retired. Chief Petrie moved up and then they went back to one deputy chief. So you know what, there's a lot of work at a top, a lot, you know, reaching out to the public and that. So. You know, there, there's a need for all those positions.
So if you had to choose today between a deputy chief. Ninety-three thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven, or the possibility of hiring on two more additional police officers. Which do you think would be more important for our police department at this particular point in our? Lives or era or time or whatever you might call it?
At this time, I, I gotta say we have such a young department. It's good to have the experience at the top. You need that experience. So many young guys down at the bottom, you got young guys training, young guys. And it's just hard, I know today they had some interviews, it's just hard to hire the new young officers to get good officers. They're out there, but you just gotta get the right fit, you know.
So do they have a deputy chief than having two additional officers? Is that correct?
I personally would say for the department, it gives you more stability, accountability and all that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I think we've all spoke, yeah, everybody spoke. At this time, are we in agreement? All right. How am I gonna word this? Do we agree to keep this position in the budget even though it's been phased out? If anybody. Does not agree with keeping the position in the budget, please speak up. Otherwise, we will be keeping the deputy chief in the budget. For the full year, not just the half year, but the full year at the ninety-three thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars.
Council Chair, okay. I want to be sure I'm not voting on the wrong thing, so I think maybe let's just keep, I prefer second grade English. Keep the position full?
Yes, keep it not, not eliminated after the guy retires.
Keep it as a full position, yes or no? Okay, I would vote for, I would vote for keeping the deputy position in full.
Councilman Muscat, do you vote to keep it?
I think we're top to top heavy, no.
Councilman, are you saying yes or no?
No.
Councilman Constance, are you agreeing to keep it?
I keep the full position.
Okay, Councilman Abdulhak.
No.
Councilman Baden.
Yes.
I'm gonna vote yes and Councilman Wenzel, you have muted yourself. Do you want to keep the position or eliminate it?
No.
Okay, we have four to three, so we will be keeping this position on our police department.
Good, okay.
Okay, next I'm opening it up to public comment. I have Director Hashem. You have two minutes. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Good evening, Council members. I just want to mention since everybody's here, all the directors were mentioned except for CDBG. It kind of falls through the cracks. I don't know if you want to discuss it or not. It's just something that I bring up because I have employees that do deserve raises. At least my coordinator does, and that's something.
What page are you on? And I apologize that I missed that.
That's why, that's, I did discuss that with Mayor Bazey. And, you know, I don't know if he has something to say about that, but we are not on your budget. We are federally paid, so we're not on the city's budget. We did discuss all the directors and you left the CDBG out. That's all.
Yeah, cause it's not in our budget. I don't know what we should, I mean, I know in the past it's been.
Madam Chair, I'll leave it up to the mayor. That's all. I just wanted to bring it up so it doesn't fall through the cracks. That's all.
Okay.
And I give my time. Thank you.
Mayor, would you like to respond to that?
Yeah, I'm in discussion with our HR director, so we're talking about that. You know, obviously, yeah, it's not in the budget. It is federally funded. So the, the HR director and I are talking about it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I have Mr. Blackburn. Let me find you and unmute you. I think you went to the next page. Go ahead, sir.
How, how are you doing tonight?
Good, how you doing?
Not bad. Just a couple of things on this budget that I haven't, that I've seen in previous budgets is. There's always been a page that shows at the beginning of the budget that shows expected revenues. Expected expenditures, current fund balance, expect, expecting fund balance at the end of this budget year. This budget doesn't have that. I was wondering if that could be included.
That's what page three is, isn't it?
Three and four.
Page three and four is what you're asking for, Mr. Blackburn.
I might have a different. Copy than you guys have then.
Yeah, this is the one that came out on April first. Is that the one you're?
Yeah, that's the one I have down, downloaded and I don't have that. Maybe I'm missing a look, um, cause I'm concerned about the raises. I'm concerned about the raises being thrown, thrown, thrown out there. It's nothing about the people, cause I don't want the people to be mad, mad at me. With the expected, with the increase in the raises, you have the increase in the fringe benefits. And I'm worried about this, this budget's not gonna be balanced and that there's gonna be a big chunk taken out of the fund balance. To balance the budget. And I know, I don't know if anybody can answer this, but I believe that they want a fifteen percent fund balance to keep our good credit rating. And I want to know how a decrease in the fund balance would. Hurt our. Prospects of getting loans in the, in the future also. And. I can't remember, that'll be it. Thanks.
Dana Parrish, where are you? Go ahead, sir. You have two minutes.
Good evening. Yeah, I wish I were. I, I'm not as lucky as you are. This is a, a police chief. I've been, I've been kind of catching up, watching these videos afterwards. I wanted to ask about, we, we talked a while back about the peer counseling program for law enforcement officers. I didn't really see anything specifically mentioned in the budget. I haven't really heard any, heard you say anything since we discussed it a while back. And I was wondering if you had budgeted for it. It's a pretty costly program to set up a peer counseling program for your, for your officers. For stress, for mental health. There's a program called Law Enforcement Mental Health and Wellness Act, which provides funds for that as well. I, I didn't see anything to follow up on there. That was, that was one thing. The other thing is. We're about public safety and being a retired officer myself. You know, we do the citations. We had, we lost a lot of people. Some of us lost family from COVID. You know, we issue citations. I'd like to see if we could get a rundown of the number of citations that our department issued for COVID violations. That's public, that's public safety. I'd like to see the number of citations that the city of Dearborn Heights issued for COVID violations. Thank you very much. And if you could address that other issue regarding peer counseling for law enforcement officers, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Myers, would you like to?
Sure, so. Sir, it is a long and expensive process. Two things. One is. Three officers have already been identified to create the program. They're in the midst of, of getting the other people on board and how it's going to run. If you don't remember, we applied for a grant through the federal government. Firefighter, the grant writer from the fire department applied for it. We are still waiting to hear back. That will fund, that, one of the things was the Cortico Public Safety Act, C O R D I C O. That would put health and wellness on an app for every law enforcement officer in our city. We're waiting to find out because that will fund it through grant money. We're waiting to hear. It's, I think it's a seventy-five, twenty-five percent match. I don't know if that's come back in or not. I would have to ask the firefighter grant writer. We have the officers identified. They're building the program. And yes, you should see it and it's not in this budget because we were hoping to get it through the grant money to fund the program.
Okay, thank you. Next. Next, I have Vince Strupkowski. Okay, unmute yourself, sir.
I did. All right, you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, so it's Vince Strupkowski, Dearborn Heights, Michigan, Wayne County. My question was regarding our grant writer. And your salary that you're going to give him are debating over. I've heard through the grapevine that some grant writers, I don't know if this is a corporate wise or not. But their salaries can also be based on a percentage of the monies that are brought in. Now, is that something that could be considered for the city here to possibly? Satisfy what his, he's asking for or rate, give him a raise in the future? So that's one thing I want to bring up. And then years ago. I worked with a company. That our owner said sometimes we have to do more with less. So if you're gonna keep the deputy chief's position in, I'd probably like to suggest that. Eliminate the emergency manager and give that position also to the deputy chief. If that's feasible. That way you can possibly bring on one or two officers.
Okay. Okay. Next I have council members and I don't know if you were gonna count on comment and public comment. I have Councilman Muscat next.
No, that's okay. I was gonna comment on something else.
Okay, Councilman Constance, did you have anything?
Yes, yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Just a concern about, these are good times. How much property values are up, we're gonna dip into our fund balance. And just to make sure that our, our books are being reconciled monthly. And also regarding the. CDBG, public housing, there's several people in that department and they do a lot and they do. Bring in a fair amount of grant money themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, again, I have Councilman Abdulhak.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to make a comment. Over the few years I see in the contract being negotiated. And specific department gets the cream of the crop and other departments got nothing. I hope the administration and the city council in the future when negotiate. Any contract to be fair to all the employees and to be. As fair as possible by giving, you know, the increases to those people because they deserve it. And inflation is very high, so the one percent is not enough. And I hope that we will take care of this during negotiations. Thank you.
Thank you. Next I have Councilman Baden.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. And I, I know I'm just gonna keep a very brief kudos to all the directors. Thank you all so much for being on here. Congratulations to all of you on your new positions and the, or on the new raises. And for the deputy directors and all of your new raises as well. I, I'm definitely a firm believer in paying well, get well, and I believe we have a great staff that are working. Personally, over the last couple of months, I've reached out to some of the newer directors and anytime I've reached out to them, they're doing a phenomenal job. And congratulations to our chief of police and our fire chief who also got a very slight raise. So congratulations to you guys as well. Madam Chair, thank you so much for today's meeting and to the mayor, thank you so much for putting this budget together in a very such short little time. As well as the controller and thank you so much to our director of HR who did a phenomenal job with this as well. Thank you so much to that. So kudos to all you guys.
Sam, go ahead, please. You have two minutes. State your name and where you live.
Sam, Dearborn Heights, Michigan, Wayne County. Thank you to Mayor Bazey for choosing the best directors out there who are doing fantastic jobs. And thank you guys for giving them what they deserve. Next I have a. A specific issue. It's not a generally a comment and I'm wondering if Chief Meyer could answer me for it, please.
Go ahead, please.
Okay. After last council meeting have happened. Some people been calling Councilman Bob Constance's office and making accusation that they getting their office number through me. I have nothing to do with this. Councilman Bob Constance was super upset about it. He made that issue refer to me saying I had anything to it. I told him I got nothing to do with it. I visited the police station to make a report. Unfortunately, they're closed due to the COVID issues. So therefore, I'm public. I'm asking Chief Meyer for an investigation. And I personally, along with Councilman Robert Constance. Would both like to know who are these people and where did they get his number from? I'm not tolerating anybody using my name for any of their drama and issues. This guy, he has his own office. It's open for business. They want to do business with him. They can call him. They don't want to do business with him. They cannot use my name and interrupt him. So Chief Myers, can you give me an answer right now in public? Are you willing to take over this investigation? Yes or no?
Are you still there?
Yes, I am.
If, if Mr. Constance feels that his phone's being harassed, I would recommend Mr. Constance to contact the police department so we can make a police report and investigate it.
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. Next we have Mariana Hernandez. Go ahead, please. You have two minutes.
Hello, Council Chair. Thank you so much. I just wanted to bring to everyone's attention that when we originally made the budget. The position for office manager under the building department was set at forty-two thousand. But after some discussions with the director of the building department, we have decided that for this new position, we would recommend to set it at forty-six thousand dollars. Because that is a very important position right now within the building department, especially as new technology is coming in. We think that it would be ideal to be able to offer a higher amount of money. Or at least the potential of getting a raise to the new person that would be coming in as the office manager and taking on the new responsibilities.
Okay, thank you. Next we have Hassan Jamal. Go ahead, please.
Good evening. I, I have a response to my friend Vance, Mr. Deprowski. You are correct, Mr. Deprowski, about the grant percentage. Most our companies do that and actually provide information and secure. A grant delete. We still need a management and administration for the grant, specifically grant. You know, they are very complicated from the F E M A, very, very complex, thousands of pages. And we've had situations in the past in the city of Dearborn Heights that the grant being failed. Not because of mistakes or anything, just because. Grant sometime given to you and you don't have the capacity to, to manage and administer those grants. The grant administration, specifically the federal. Or the state are co-interacted with the budgetary compliance. So they are kind of like, you need to enter, enter, you know, exchange the information, the financials. Especially, you know, when it comes to audit, you have to match you reporting at the federal treasury or at the state treasury with your reporting in the budget. So there is too many complex relationship between managing and administering. So there is too many complex relationship between managing and administering the grant and the budgetary compliance beyond just, you know, bringing somebody, giving them ten or fifteen percent. It costs too much money. So if you, if, let's say, you know, we wanna, we wanna have somebody bring a grant for FEMA and it's five million dollars, that's a lot of money to pay for that particular person to just bring you a, a grant, delete. And we've had experience in the past with companies, you know, like the NSP, we have to give up back to the state about eight hundred thousand dollars in the past, give and take. And we, you know, if, if the city wanted to use that particular services, which I agree with you, they have a lot of opportunity in the past. We missed a lot. I'm reviewing, you know, what we missed in the city in the past. It is amazing. And, and at no fault for nobody. It just, you know, like Dearborn right now, they are proposing, you know, to hire a grant, you know, a compliance manager. It just reached my, my, their debate just a few, few days ago. It, it's, it's the amount of what's we receiving now from the federal government and from the state. It's amazing. So you don't really want to pay somebody because that person will be making probably half a million dollars a year from you. You don't want to give up percentage of your, of your grant, because those grants are really coming with, with effort, but, you know, consistency. The federal agencies won't really trust you, then they won't give you loans.
Okay, this time you are well over the two minutes. Okay, Councilman Wenzel, you have two minutes. Go ahead, please.
Only two?
You know, you're already on the clock. Hurry up.
Okay, well, first of all, I want to thank all the people that put this budget together in the time period that it was done. They did a super job, professional job, and all aspects of it. And lastly, I just wanted to let all the people, the residents listening, that these salary increases today were not given to the person, but for the position. Some people, I've, I've gotten calls saying, well, that person doesn't have this experience. We're not giving the, the person themselves the raise. It's the position for that, this person and all people down the line. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, is there any further public comment before we go? That's it. Before we go, I'd like to make a statement. Lately, I've had some concerns. I'm going to ask for people to please contact me directly for any concerns I, as council chair, can fix. It gets confusing when multiple people, calling multiple people about an issue that I could have simply taken care of with one call. It's simple call, could have resolved it, and so to avoid further confusion, I ask if there's a situation that I can handle, please call me. Don't call everybody else and pass it on and on. By the time it gets to me, it loses the communication, and then I have to dig and find out really what the problem is. At this time, I'd like to wish everyone a good night, and the meeting has ended. Have a good night now.